Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening the regular meeting of the High Point City Council. It's the first meeting of the year 2025. We appreciate you all making time to be with us. Prior to getting into our business for this meeting, we're going to ask for everyone to join us in a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here on the dais, we have every member of council present, including Madam City Manager Logan Ford. Prior to moving into our agenda, we're actually going to have an adoption of our agenda. And for that, I'll entertain a motion from the dais.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion's been made by Mayor Proton Holmes and seconded by Councilmember Andrews. There are discussion on the motion to adopt our agenda. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and our agenda passes. First item that we're going to do this evening is a presentation, and I'm going to ask the gentleman who's here with us, Mr. Sink, Mr. Bo Sink. You know, it's funny, I actually know Mr. Sink. I've just never called him by his first name. His wife taught my son in kindergarten, and so teachers are always their last names. Even when you see them in grocery stores, it's Mr. and Mrs. Sink. So I don't even know you as Bo Sink. It's good to see you. Is anyone else here with you for this?
I'm Ivan Huckman, also a board member of the HRC.
Okay, Ivan, you want to come on up as well for this? Good to see you, man. Appreciate the work you do as well. Appreciate you both. All right. So this is in honor of Human Trafficking Awareness Month, which I think needless to be said, is an incredibly serious issue, one that is hard to imagine that it takes place so close to us, but it happens underneath our eyes without us seeing it sometimes in plain sight. And being aware of this is so critical, so appreciate you all's work. Whereas, the High Point community understands that human trafficking is a crime that exploits the most vulnerable and weakens the health of individuals and families. Whereas, despite 25 years since passing the Trafficking Victims' Protection Act, human trafficking still exists. And whereas, human trafficking can be prevented by building individual, community, and societal understanding and resilience, reducing social inequities, and addressing conditions that contribute to exploitation. And whereas, the Human Trafficking Resource Center is dedicated to understanding and addressing the impact of trauma, incorporating cultural and language needs, and ensuring that everyone impacted by human trafficking can receive individual care. And whereas, a successful response to human trafficking requires a coordinated, community-wide effort with relevant experience, collaboration to strengthen trafficking-related services, and programs to assist people who have experienced human trafficking. And whereas, every individual, community, and organization can contribute to enhancing human trafficking awareness, prevention and response, and learn ways to help by contacting the Human Trafficking Resource Center. And whereas, the City of High Point is proud to recognize January 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and the Human Trafficking Resource Center as an organization that provides safe, trauma-informed services to survivors and victims of human trafficking. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of High Point, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and ask our citizens to recognize the Human Trafficking Resource Center as an asset to our community in the fight against human trafficking. Thank you so much. Thank you. I think next, we're going to call up our human relations team for this next honor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of council, and Madam Manager. I'm Race McCray, Human Relations Manager for the city. Unfortunately, the HRC Chair Sharon McGregor is unable to join us tonight, so in her stead, it is my honor to present the Human Relations Commission's 2024 Humanitarian Award. This award honors an individual who has made a significant contribution to human relations in High Point through their promotion of equity and by encouraging understanding, respect, and goodwill among all High Point residents. This year, the commission received 10 nominations for the award, and I'd like to thank everyone who submitted a nomination for highlighting the outstanding work happening in our community. Every nomination we received shined a light on a uniquely dedicated and compassionate individual, and the Human Relations Commission had the unenviable task of selecting only one honoree for this award. Our commissioners feel that tonight's award winner stands out for how they inspire High Point families to see the possibilities of a brighter future. Over nearly two decades, this person has mentored hundreds of young people in Guilford County schools, and they have been just as instrumental outside the classroom in connecting underserved families to basic resources like food, clothes, housing, and financial support. Their work has been especially important to our Latino communities. As part of a group, Fuerza Latina Unida Para Triunfar, or FLUT, they established, right here in High Point, the triad area's first Spanish-language board development academy, encouraging and preparing Latina leaders to join boards and commissions in local government, schools, and nonprofits. They also established a youth-led group for Latino students, which has since hosted a first-of-its-kind statewide Latinx youth summit to promote leadership development, cultural competency, social justice, and civic engagement. Of course, while all these initiatives are community-focused, their effect on the people who live here is a personal one. Tonight's honoree received multiple nominations, and each nominator emphasized this person's genuine care and humility. Whether coaching soccer, advising student clubs, helping graduates secure financial aid and scholarships, or serving as the first Latino vice principal at High Point Central High School, this person has selflessly exceeded their duties as an educator. And as was evident in all the nominations we received, they have made our community feel welcomed, inspired, empowered, and ultimately cared for. Tonight's humanitarian award honors both the generous compassion this person has for the High Pointers of today and their hope that greater things are still yet to come. Therefore, please join me in giving a big round of applause to the 2024 humanitarian award recipient, Hector Anzizar Gomez Argote.
Congratulations. Well deserved.
You too, Mr. [inaudible].
Well deserved. Here. Welcome over. Awesome. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. We want to echo the sentiment shared there about the immense value in terms of the work that you do in our community. And as a government, for the people, by the people, there's nothing best than when we get to see the people doing the work. You do it in a very unique way, and as someone who's worked in a school building alongside you, I've seen it firsthand. So thank you. Seriously, thank you. Our next item business is our public comment period. This is an item that takes place every council, well, the first council meeting of every month, and we invite the public to come and share for three minutes on any topic that you wish. We have a list of those who have signed up, and I'll call the names based on the order in which you have signed up. But if you're here, and you would like to speak during public comment period and didn't get a chance to sign up, that's completely fine. You can still come on up and speak. What is asked, you state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address council. First person signed up on our list this evening is Mr. Ken Orms.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd give me a little indulgence tonight, I'm having just a little breathing issue, so it may take me just a slightly longer than three minutes, and I apologize for that. My name is Ken Orms. I'm a High Point resident, and High Point should change its marketing and identify as an incompetent High Point because the city has a history of incompetence and arrogance, and the council has failed to hold anyone accountable. Twenty-four years ago, the city created a wide path and easement through heavily wooded undeveloped lot to install a sanitary sewer line and approve the construction of four communities in the area. One of the zoning requirements was for the creation of an integrated trail system. The city was incompetent because they knowingly allowed the developers to totally ignore this ordinance and failed to require a funding mechanism to maintain the path and easement the city created. The path is on our private property where the public and residents of almost 700 homes use this path to reach the bicentennial greenway. Since 2016, our HOA community has tried to get the city to address this issue. Deputy City Manager Ferguson freely admits the city failed to enforce their own zoning ordinances, and their history of incompetence has forced our community to spend thousands of dollars to maintain the path the city created. The city proved their incompetence by requiring developers to install sections of concrete sidewalks to make it easy for people to trespass onto our private property. The city said they have no leverage to force these communities to help pay for path maintenance, quote, "unless they are up for future zoning approval or additional expansion to the development," unquote. However, one community had built two new apartment buildings, and another community is currently, right now, today, building two more homes. The city proved they are incompetent when they failed to use their leverage to require these communities to contribute to the cost of maintaining the path that they built. I submitted 10 public records requests and reviewed hundreds of documents, and when I asked how and why the city refused to fix the problems they created, the city attorney McGuire arrogantly said, quote, "The city is under no obligation to answer your why or how questions," unquote. In December, Ms. McGuire said the city, excuse me, had my emails and supporting documents independently reviewed. Since taxpayer money was used, I submitted a public records request to get a copy of the independent review to find out how much it costs and who authorized spending taxpayer money for the review. I'm still waiting for that information. I moved to High Point from the Chicago area where crooked politicians and corrupt bureaucrats routinely make backroom deals. Some might think High Point is an example of that type of government, but I don't. I think in some cases, the city is just arrogant and incompetent, and their 24-year history of incompetence, by failing to enforce their own zoning ordinances and their arrogant attitude towards our HOA community, clearly proves this to be true.
Thank you, Mr. Orms.
Finally, I invited every council member to spend 20 minutes walking the path. Mr. Holmes said he would, but canceled after the city attorney apparently told him not to. It's time for you to view the damage caused by the city's incompetence and to represent people, not ignore them. And I have a copy of my comments to give the city clerks so they can be included as presented in the minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Orms. Next on our list is Mr. Matthew Stafford. If you'll come forward and speak to our podium.
Good evening.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm Matthew Stafford. I live at 120 James Road in Ward 4, Patrick Harman's district. Thank you, distinguished members of council, for hearing me. I'm glad everyone got through the storm safely. I would like to talk to you guys about paratransit. As some of you may know, I cannot drive because of my epilepsy, and paratransit unfortunately only runs till 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, at which point it takes over for transporting dialysis patients, and I don't begrudge them at all. But I think, but I think we need to, pardon me, extend paratransit hours and get some more drivers because transportation is a major issue in a disability community. As some of you know, the ADA allows disabled people to request reasonable accommodations for employment, but having to duck out at 1:30 to get the paratransit is not a reasonable accommodation for disabled people. So it impacts their ability to get a job. And disabled people have doubled the unemployment rate as anyone else. So this issue does need to be fixed. We need to get some more drivers. And I hope we can work through this throughout the year. Thank you for your time, everybody. Have a nice day.
Mr. Stafford, thank you so much, and I think I speak for this council in that your comments are well heard. Did you want to say something just now, Councilman Harmon?
No, we spoke earlier this morning, and I believe staff is going to have a conversation. I mean, public transit, yeah, is definitely a concern of mine. It's one of the reasons I ran for council.
Also, I will be willing to send you all an email about the statistics I have found, if you guys want.
Yes, please.
That'd be great.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Next on our list is Beverly Bard. Mrs. Bard, if you'll come forward to address council, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Beverly Jo Bard, and I live at 2205 Delane Point in High Point, North Carolina, 27265. I would like to hear support, Mr. Matt Stafford. We also need benches and a little bit of cover and maybe a trash can by these bus stops and more buses with more frequent times. I'd like to go on with connectivity, sidewalks. I have a beautiful location, very close to Oak Hollow Festival Park. I have a granddaughter who loves to go there and play, but I have to drive my car just a few blocks. So connectivity means more sidewalks. So please do that in all of our communities, especially for public schools and children who walk to schools. Also, I would like to address Ms. City Manager, Ms. Logan Ford. Several years ago, and I know it's been a while, and I haven't been back, but I did send you a little document about the Equal Rights Amendment stating that no state or the United States shall deny anyone their rights based upon their sex. So, and I do like to address Mayor Jefferson here for restating your goals as far as applicable to all people. I really like that. But I think it would be nice to have a public statement saying that High Point is definitely equal to men and women everywhere. So thank you so much for your time. And Ms. Ford, if you would like to contact me with that, I did send personal stories, a resolution, and hundreds of signatures. So thank you for your time.
Mrs. Bard, thank you so much, and thank you for echoing the points of Mr. Stafford. Mr. Stafford, actually, as I recall it, you reached out on social media. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was going to ask, are you a Los Angeles Rams fan?
No. I don't really do football.
There is a very famous quarterback with the exact same name as yours.
Yeah, I've had that brought up in job interviews. It makes it really awkward.
Makes it really awkward. Okay. Well, I guess depending on how he does tonight, you'll know if people are talking to you tomorrow or not. No, seriously, thank you both. Thank you. I'm going to take a point of just clarification here. On our public hearing sheet, I see a few names. This is for items later in our agenda, but I'm going to assume this is a sign up for public comment. Is that correct? Dr. Hairston, the folks who came from NAACP. Okay, all right. We'll call those folks then. First, we'll have Dr. Hairston, president of our local chapter of the NAACP. How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing excellent. Madam City Manager, Mr. Mayor, and our esteemed city council, this is our media statement from the McDonald's police-involved incident on December 19th, 2024, which appeared in the High Point Enterprise, but I want to move through this in its full capacity. "The High Point NAACP is committed to holding the High Point Police Department and the City of High Point to the highest standard of professionalism and excellence in the execution of the law and policing standards in law enforcement and community relations." And I quote from Chief Curtis Cheeks, "Any loss of life is tragic and never the goal or the objective of the call to service. In the spirit of transparency, the matter in question has been referred to the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation for full, impartial, and thorough investigation with the cooperation of High Point Police Department, which includes full access to body camera footage and call records. While the SBA is allowed to do its review, High Point Police Department will verify internal policy and procedures to determine if all were applied and followed. The staff are required to adhere to mental health appointments, which include mandatory follow-up appointments. We are confident that the incident in question will be fully investigated. The High Point NAACP has worked hard to educate, engage, and encourage communication and cooperation among law enforcement and the City of High Point and our community at large. Although we understand the frustration, we will act collectively to develop actionable solutions to prevent these incidents. Far too long, mental health and policing occupies a space in need of attention. We cannot expect mental health counseling by non-mental health professionals. We seek out facts, offer recommendations, and encourage all to be held to the highest standard of police encounters. First, we want to accelerate already existing proposal to collaborate with other municipalities and look at their protocols to model. Achieve national accreditation, which enhances transparency and public trust. This recommendation in no way minimizes the capability and integrity of the police department, but merely adds value to their already existing state accreditation. We need to activate a law enforcement, community-wide advisory committee to ensure we are all in this together. Through it all, the future is bright for High Point as we come together, work through this and other challenges before us, and emerge as the leader in fair and transparent policing. We are High Point, and we are stronger together."
Thank you, Dr. Hairston. Next on our list is Dr. Fuller. If you'll come forward to state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to address council.
Good evening. I'm Sherrell Fuller, 2926 Dexterity Court, and I come to you as the first vice president of the High Point NAACP. I'd like to share a portion of a letter sent in November demonstrating our continued advocacy in the community. Greetings. The end of the year is quickly approaching, and the High Point NAACP's aim is to motivate some of the most powerful organizations in the U.S. to seize the moment. Far too long, the Black citizens of the United States of America have anticipated an apology for the atrocities of slavery. We have those who relegate this act to the past, but the descendants of the perpetrators continue to reap financial benefits of the actions of their forefathers. The trauma, collateral damage, and remnants of slavery still haunt our very existence, perpetuated by those who, to this day, stand by the doctrine that slavery was the right thing to do. In 1955, Dr. King said, "Now it's always the time to do the right thing." We, the High Point NAACP, petition the Congressional Black Caucus, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and the North Carolina State Conference NAACP to join our efforts to request President Joe Biden issue a formal apology to the Black citizens of the United States of America and their descendants for the atrocities of slavery. President Biden recently apologized to Native Americans for their disenfranchisements and cultural assault leveled against them. If this is possible, then surely an apology is in order to the Black citizens of the United States and their descendants who endured the brutality of slavery. America is a country of firsts, most recently, the first Black woman to successfully be nominated by a major political party and run for the presidency. Although not the first country to apologize for the atrocities leveled against its citizens, but let this be the first step to redress the unfinished business of healing such atrocities against Black people who have contributed mightily to the building of this great country we all call our home. And this was respectfully submitted by Dr. Elma Hairston on behalf of the members of the High Point NAACP. This letter was sent to NAACP president and shared with Congressional Black Caucus, national and state leaders, and elected officials, including our mayor, Mayor Jefferson. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. Next on our list, I believe the name is Timothy Samms. If you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Certainly. Thank you. Timothy Simmons, 6410 Hedgewood Lane, High Point. To Mayor Jefferson, Madam City Manager, and City Council. The High Point branch of the NAACP formally announces its 2025 through 2027 officers. They are President, Dr. Elma Hairston; First Vice President, Dr. Sherrell Fuller; Second Vice President, Timothy Simmons; Third Vice President, Terry Dixon Jr.; Secretary, Tanara Garlandton; Assistant Secretary, Miyaka Sturdivant; Treasurer, Mr. Richard Fuquay; Assistant Treasurer, Sherry Brown; Parliamentarian, Dr. Bertrand Bonnich, excuse me. Our mission of the NAACP is to achieve equity, political and social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expands human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, and accelerate well-being education and economic security for Black people and all persons of color. Our vision, we envision an inclusive community rooted in liberation where all persons can exercise their civil and human rights without discrimination. Our work is defined by the communities who compromise our internal infrastructure. The High Point branch of the NAACP is a vanguard organization. We recruit members from the community at large, leaders from other organizations, and youth organizations to ensure clear, concise, consistent communication throughout the community. Our goal is to execute a plan of action that drives systematic infrastructure change for those who have been omitted from the process. High Point is on the cutting edge of an economic boom, and our community is poised and ready to seize the moment with human capital that complements this boom. Connecting with our stakeholders, including our faith community, is key. We continue to dismantle the stereotypical barriers preventing these relationships. We are confronted with major concerns: poverty, fair housing, homelessness, healthcare, economic instability, lack of home ownership, and so much more. We do not have all the answers, but together we move forward in developing solutions that benefit us all. For membership, explanation of our committee goals, and more, please visit our website at www.naacphighpoint.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak for public comment? If so, feel free to come forward and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address council. I recognize Mr. Ferguson.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, and the rest of council, my name is Ryan Ferguson, the marketing manager of the City of High Point, and I am here today for the, probably the fortunate reason for you and everybody else around the world, and maybe unfortunate for me, I was asked to dance in the competition of Dancing with the High Point Stars. I said yes this year, and we have about a month to go. The event is raising funds for communities and schools. Communities and schools does great things for our community, you know, different things like mentorship, college career fairs, job opportunities, and things like that. So this is their major fundraising event, and you will get to see me out on the dance floor, whether it's live in person or streamed. You can watch, you can watch my horrible, horrible performance. But what I am up here is to ask for those donations. There's many different ways that you can do that. You can go to CIS of High Point, the website, and click on my ugly mug. You can donate to my page. The one thing that I reluctantly, over the past couple of years, said no is because of the dance portion of it, when in reality, it is, it is great that we're raising funds for this amazing organization. My one goal is to raise those funds, but ultimately, I would love you guys to help me raise money so I can raise money. me raise money so I can raise more than one Raven Jefferson, who I have said that I need to outraise. So if you could, please visit that website, or I can make it easy. You can certainly reach out to me, or you can text Ryan, R-Y-A-N, at three three six five five nine three eight seven six to help donate. Whether it's me, whether it's Raven, or anybody else that is dancing this year, please, if you would, support. That goes to everybody in this room and everybody listening as well. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Ryan, thank you for that. Anyone else would like to speak for public comment? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address council.
Good evening, everyone. I am Terrace Byrne the second, four oh eight Cubane Avenue. I am currently the Education Vista at the Carl Chase YMCA. I am a May twenty twenty-three High Point University graduate. I'm also getting my MBA with a concentration in supply chain at High Point University as well. I just wanted to say that the Carl Chase YMCA is having our twenty-second annual Martin Luther King Junior Parade. It'll be from two to four o'clock, and the route's gonna start from West High and South Main, and it will end on the intersection of Cubane and North Main Street. So come out. It's gonna be a little cold, so please bundle up, and that's all I have to say for y'all.
Awesome. Is there also a black and white ball next weekend, too, with that parade?
Yeah, there is black and white ball, but tickets are sold out.
Oh, okay. I got you. You don't wanna give us false hope. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public comment, period? If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and say a very special thank you to everyone who took time to come out. The first item of business is our consent agenda. Council has those items in front of them. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Motion to approve. I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim Holmes and seconded by Councilman Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to approve our consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and our consent agenda has been passed. Under general business, the first item's twenty twenty-five dash zero one five, Resolution of Intent, Annexation two four dash zero four. For this item, I'm gonna ask Mr. Shannon if you'll come forward to speak and address council.
Yeah, Herb Shannon, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Department. This agenda item pertains to an annexation petition that's been submitted by the property owners at the southeast corner of NC sixty-eight and Gallimore Dairy Road. The purpose of the resolution of intent is for City Council to set a public hearing date. Staff is recommending the council adopt this resolution of intent for February seventeenth to be the date to have the public hearing on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Moore and seconded by Councilmember Cook. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and the hearing date has been established. Next item's twenty twenty-five dash zero one six, Public Hearing Regarding Alro Steel Corporation, Annexation two four dash zero three. This time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll acknowledge Mr. Shannon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Herb Shannon, once again. The next two agenda item, Annexation Case twenty four oh three and Zoning Map Amendment twenty four dash twenty four, both pertain to the same tract of land. Staff will provide a combined presentation. However, you will have to vote on each item separately, the annexation, and with the zoning, you would have to adopt that with a consistency and reasonable statement. This is a ten-acre tract of land in a northern portion of the city's planning area. This site is currently in unincorporated Guilford County. There's an existing forty-three thousand square foot manufacturing facility on the site. The property owners are proposing an expansion to up to a hundred sixty-five thousand square feet and approximately ten million dollar expansion project. However, the size of this facility will require connection to municipal water and sewer. Thus, the applicant's requesting annexation and rezoning to have access to city utilities. This property is situated in a northern portion of the city's planning area at that intersection of Tyner Road and National Service Road. There have been a number of annexations in this area. The city's comprehensive plan, which is the slide that's depicted here, shows this area as Nick's Employment Center area, which is intended for large-scale warehousing, distribution, light manufacturing, and flex office space. This is a map of the current zoning pattern in that area where there have been multiple annexations in this area since the nineteen nineties. To the east and west are existing light industrial and employment center zone parcels, and to the south is a hundred and fifty-acre industrial park that was annexed in the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands. Staff is supportive of this annexation petition as it represents a logical progression of the city's annexation policies in this area. There are already city utilities, water, and sewer that abut the site, and city services. Thus, annexation will not negatively impact the city's ability to provide services for this area. In regards to zoning, the applicant's requesting establishing city zoning of conditional zoning employment center. This is a similar zoning that's been adopted to the east and west, and the C U L I zoning to the south is of similar nature from the previous zoning ordinance from the early nineteen nineties. Annexation and rezoning to the E C district will allow for a continued industrial development of this area. Key point staff has noted in analysis is that the proposed E C district will have the same standards as the industrial park that's on the opposite side of the street. Allowable uses will be the same, and that E C district has development standards that will ensure the continued high standard for the industrial developments for this area. Thus, staff is recommending approval of this zoning request. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on December tenth and recommended approval, and they included a consistency and reasonable statement in the recommendation for City Council's consideration. That is a brief overview of both the annexation and zoning approval, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Before we move to staff questions, I do want to get one point of clarification here. I know we have two votes to take, but does it also necessitate two different hearings?
No, this is combined as one, but then you'll have to have separate votes.
Separate votes. Okay.
And then the zoning, and then at which point you can adopt the consistency statement that was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Understood. So one hearing, one presentation from staff, and so at this point, any questions that council has in general for item twenty twenty-five dash zero one six or twenty twenty-five dash zero one seven, we can go and ask that of staff now.
Mr. Shannon, those residential houses, I mean, is that zone residential still, the ones that are still out there? Or is that, and those are in the county, right?
Yeah, directly to the west. I think it shows up better on the previous map. The area outlined in gray directly to the left is in unincorporated Guilford County.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Shannon. In terms of those who have signed up to speak during this public hearing, we have one, Mr. Brent Cochran. Mr. Cochran, if you want to come forward.
Is the applicant here to speak?
Are you the applicant, Mr. Cochran? You go ahead and come forward. Since we're doing one hearing, you can go ahead and speak on both items here.
I'm Brent Cochran with FBI Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors. We are now located at forty-one ninety-six Mendenhall Oaks Parkway in High Point. So we were located in Colfax, but moved over to High Point. A little bit, kind of some background here, what I'd like to do is tell you a little bit about Alro Steel. I don't know how much you guys may or may not know, but a brief introduction to them is they were founded in nineteen forty-eight. They are a family-owned company. They're headquartered in Jackson, Michigan. They are one of the largest metal distribution and processing companies in the United States. They have a longstanding reputation for providing high-quality materials, including metals, industrial supplies, and plastics, and this goes across a wide range of industries. They specialize in the distribution of processing such metals as steel, aluminum, stainless steel, and alloys. And if you actually look at their website and have a chance to talk to anybody, it's very much a same-day delivery. You call us, we'll take care of it, get it shipped over to you. So their manufacturing facility is very key to their business operations. They serve industries such as manufacturing, construction, automotive, and, as we all know, aerospace right now, and energy. Currently in the Piedmont Tribe region, they have two operations. There's the Alro Metals Outlet on Industrial Drive in Greensboro. This facility, as Mr. Shannon said, is located in unincorporated Guilford County. They've been there for several years. It's an existing facility, and this complements their network of over seventy-five facilities across the U.S. The purpose of the request is pretty straightforward. They need to expand this existing facility. They need to modernize within the building and transition from currently, they're on a well and septic system, and so it's essential that they have water and sewer to meet the needs of the future building and the expansion. So a quick look at the preliminary sketch plan, site plan. We did submit this through the city's Technical Review Committee for Sketch Plan Review. Received several comments on it. The red outline would be the perimeter outline of the proposed building, which we'll look at some elevations of here in just a second. Be adding a new parking lot, updating their office within the facility. We've proposed two stormwater locations to meet the requirements of watershed, and so basically what you have is the top right of the box is the existing facility. The dark gray within it is the expansion of the facility. One thing that makes Alro very unique from even some of our other own clients, all of their processing is within the facility. And you'll see here in just a minute that these trucks are actually entering the building, loading, unloading, and then exiting the building. So from the outside, you're not actually seeing the manufacturing. This building that we're proposing, this is a very, very complimentary building. This is one in their Cedar Rapids location, recently updated. You can see the parking lot there. If you'll notice in the bottom right of the picture of the building, you'll see an overhead door, and the same thing in the top left. Those overhead doors are actually where the trucks are entering and exiting the facility on either side. In addition to the building, we are also offering, through Technical Review Committee and working with Herb and staff, an upgraded buffer that fronts forty. I don't know if you guys are familiar exactly where this is, big Alro building on the side of the highway, but it's, we're offering an enhanced buffer there. We will be accessing via National Service Road. Our trip, we've worked with NC DOT, and we'll continue to work with city staff to make sure our entrances are good to go. The community, we did do a community engagement meeting. No one attended that. However, I did have one of those property owners that was in that block that you mentioned. She called, wanted to know what was going on, obviously, and then wanted to know when somebody was coming to buy her property, because she was ready to go. So that is the only engagement we've had from the community through the notifications, and I don't believe staff had had any requests come through either. So Alro Steel is dedicated to operating its facilities, obviously within full compliance of zoning regulations and local ordinances. They do strive to maintain a safe and efficient building and processes and definitely become an invested partner within the community. I'm here to answer any questions, and additionally, and representative with Alro is here to answer any questions that you folks may have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Are any questions for the applicant from council? No, just wanted to say I'm continuing to be excited about the industrial expansion in North High Point, and especially in Ward Six. And so just a question on timelines, you know, the expansion, what are we looking at in terms of timeline?
The next couple of years, is best I can tell you. Obviously, we've got, we've still got significant planning to do on our end. There's not a whole lot more to do within the facility. Like I said, they're mirroring this off of the Cedar Rapids facility, but on the exterior of the site, we've got to work out a lot of things with the grading. We're trying to bring big trucks in, turn them around, and all that good stuff. So we've got to work through that over the next several months, go through the permitting process. You're probably two years, three years out, somewhere in that frame, before you get physically within a CEO of the facility, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council for the applicant?
No, just, when are you gonna go buy that lady's property?
I don't know. She caught me off guard with that one. I hadn't, I've been doing this a long time. I haven't had that question yet.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for the public hearing who would like to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and make a motion to approve item twenty twenty-five dash zero one six, which is the annexation request.
Second.
Motion's been made by the mayor and seconded by Councilmember Peters. Any discussion on the motion for annexation approval? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. I also make a motion to approve item twenty twenty-five dash zero one seven. Is there a second?
Second.
And I will state that it includes the approval of the consistency and reasonable statement as included in the staff report. Is that, does that second still stand, even with the reasonable?
It still stands.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Johnson. Any discussion on the motion to approve item twenty twenty-five dash zero one seven? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Thank you. Next item for consideration is election of the City of High Point's Mayor Pro Tim. Council has requested to confirm the appointment of Councilmember Britt Moore as the City of High Point's Mayor Pro Tim, term effective immediately and expiring December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve this item. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm gonna recognize our current Mayor Pro Tim on that one. Any discussion on this motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say I appreciate working with all of you, and I appreciate your confidence in giving me the honor of serving. Thank you.
I'll also go ahead and say, you know, governance, if you haven't heard it already, is teamwork, and we talk about the incredible amount of teamwork that this body has to do with staff, with our external partners, with other governing bodies, but even amongst this dais, there's an incredible amount of teamwork. And in twenty twenty-four, dare I say, Mayor Pro Tim Holmes, we've got our money's worth out of him, y'all.
Yeah, we do. Thank you, Mike.
Between the state of the city, presenting to Fantasia, still jealous about that one, being able to stand in in so many incredible ways. This is a busy city, y'all, and every single day, we field requests for folks who want to ensure that their elected officials show up in a very meaningful way, to not just discuss how to move our city forward, but to be with them in their celebrations and to be with them in their hardships, too. And as an elected body, we try to truly be that government for the people, by the people. Means we can't be everywhere all the time, though, and it truly requires partnership and teamwork. And so I want to say a very special thank you to our Mayor Pro Tim, Michael Holmes, who's done an incredible job. And I'll say to Councilmember Britt Moore, make sure you wear some Nikes, because we're gonna be running, man.
I got you.
Okay, all right. There you go. You used to play quarterback anyway, so this is easy for you.
We don't want to hash back on.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Next item is item twenty twenty-five dash zero one eight, consideration, wait, let me back up. Back up. Is, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Britt, I told you the Nikes, be ready.
Yeah, sure.
All right, next item's twenty twenty-five dash zero one eight, consideration of the appointment of a council liaison to twenty forty-five Comprehensive Plan Task Force. Council has requested to affirm the appointment of Councilmember Monica Peters to serve on that task force as a council liaison. Is there a motion to approve this item?
No move.
Second. Second.
Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim Moore and seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on the motion to approve this item? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, consideration of an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Council is requesting to confirm the appointment of- Council is requested to confirm the appointment of former High Point Mayor Bernita Sims to Historic Preservation Commission, term effective immediately and expiring on June 30th, 2027. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Still moved.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Holmes and seconded by Councilmember Harmon. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item, 2025-020, Consideration of Reappointment to the Guilford County/City Insurance Advisory Committee. City Council's requested to confirm the reappointment of John Calzey to the Guilford County/City Insurance Committee, term effective immediately and expiring December 21st, 2027. Is there a motion for this item?
Still moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Holmes and seconded by Councilmember McKeever. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is 2025-024, Consideration of an Appointment to Citizens Advisory Council. Council's requested to confirm the appointment of Miyaka Sturtevant to the Citizens Advisory Council, term effective immediately and expiring May 5th, 2025. Is that correct?
She's still in an unexpired term.
Okay, awesome. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Last, before we make the motion to go into closed session, I'll entertain any announcements.
I don't think a motion was made in that vote.
Yeah, make a motion. In the Miyaka Sturtevant one?
Yes, but I would like to make a motion to approve Miyaka Sturtevant's Advisory Council.
Thank you so much.
I'll second.
Motion's been recognized by Councilmember Cook, seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Before we make the motion to go into closed session, are there any announcements or comments from the DIAS?
I'll say that MLK Weekends coming up, and we're looking forward to a fun and very boisterous weekend here in the city to celebrate the legacy of one Dr. Martin Luther King. Also, it just so happens that on MLK holidays, also inauguration day, and I don't know about you all, but I'm, I'm a very proud American, and I'm always grateful. As the birthplace of democracy, whenever we see very peaceful transitions of power, I think it's not something to be taken for granted, but something to appreciate. And so I'm excited because we'll be able to, to see that played out in real time on the same day that we honor Dr. King's legacy.
Any other comments or announcements from the DIAS? Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Still moved.
Second.
Again. Motion's been made by Councilmember Holmes, seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to go into closed session for returning client privilege? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we are going into closed session.